Yeah, sure.
I'd like to call to order the Iredell County Board of Commissioners meeting for the six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, August the 5th, 2025. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Stroud to give the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we are about to do for the citizens of Iredell County.
Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the many gifts you give us. Lord, we ask you to be with us, to help us to open up our ears and open up our hearts, listen to what's said, make good, wise, godly decisions for the citizens of Iredell County. Lord, we ask you to just work in our hearts, help us grow stronger and closer as a board and to our staff and to the citizens that we understand the needs and everything that each each citizen goes through, Lord. Lord, we've got a lot of folks out there sick and afflicted. Well, Lord, we ask you to be with them and heal them. We ask you to be with those that are in harm's way and that protect us every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Brown to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to we have any adjustments for the agenda, I know we get at least one.
For Chair Conley, we have the addition under administrative matters, and that'll be item 8.10, and that is the Brookwood Inn Displacement Response Initiative.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, the agenda is approved. We do not have any special recognitions or awards this evening, but we do have an appointment before the Board, a presentation from Parks and Recreation, a thank you video, and I'll turn it over to the manager to kick that off.
Okay, I'm actually going to introduce Daniel Leatherman, which is our Parks and Rec Director, and Jacob's with him as well, and they have a video that they're going to show that is basically comes from the patrons that use our Parks and Rec programs and services.
So Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Today's recognition and this video is for you all, and it's in support, a thank you in support of the Iredell County Parks and Recreation Department patrons. So, we started this project as a small-scale effort of recruiting folks from age five to 95 to share what the Parks and Recreation Department has meant to them. Word spread very quickly, and before we knew it, we had over 100 submissions of testimonials, stories of how the department programs and services have impacted them. So, we have a couple different things for you here. You'll see in front of you a packet. Each of you has some unique stories, pictures. Again, our campers helped out with that, all the way up to our senior program participants. So, this is a thank you for you all, for what you do to support the services that we offer as a department. I'll turn it over to Jacob for the second half and to queue up our video.
Sure. So, July, every year is Parks and Recreation Month. It's a month set aside to showcase and highlight the impact of our field and what it means to people. So, all month long through July, we did our normal programming, but on top of that, we did Parks and Rec Month specific programming. So, we did about three extra things per week throughout the month of July. Things like social media challenges, things like park scavenger hunts, things like Kids Swim Free Saturday, or Free Boating Saturday at Stumpy Creek, et cetera. So, as a highlight to, a grand finale to cap off the end of Parks and Rec Month, we wanted to, some of the things that you all have in your packet, we wanted to compile in a video to show you firsthand, not from Daniel and I, but from the patrons who we serve, some of their appreciation for what we do, and their appreciation is directed to y'all for making it all happen. So, elected officials, county management, we wanted to let you hear from them. So, let me queue this up real quick. About a six-minute video. This is the premiere. Very, I can count on one hand the people who have seen this, so this is a grand premiere for y'all.
Scotty, did you mess with it?
I did.
Okay.
When we came here, we realized that I don't think we've ever been the one that's so well-maintained, that the equipment is clean, the place is always spotless, and the staff is always, always helpful. Glad to talk to people. Rec Center does not get a lot of employees turned over, staff turned over, and that's a good thing. You can walk in and the same people are there all the time. They get to know you, they get to know you. That's when I go on some of the trips. The reason that, besides just going to see interesting places, it serves a community that sometimes are folks that maybe wouldn't have the resources or the means to drive there themselves, or the comfort zone to drive far to someplace they're not familiar with the roads.
When I first moved here, I had lived in Myrtle Beach for 20 years. I moved up to Statesville to be with my son, and I got an apartment, and I was so lost. Not at all like Myrtle Beach. So, I decided to try the Senior Seminar and Parks and Recreation. And I did both, and I have absolutely the best perks. I really like all the trips because I've never gotten to see northern North Carolina. So, I try to go to places where I've never been, but I'd go anywhere, you know? They go to the mountains, I go.
I came to Iredell because we get to go to Carolinas and go to the core and meet friends and stuff like that. My number favorite thing who came to Iredell is the gun in the pocket, Joey.
Seventy-eight years old, and I have a severe case, an aggressive case of rheumatoid arthritis. But because of the Rec Center, I am in probably the best condition I've ever been in, both mentally and physically. In spite of my age, in spite of my condition, I work out every day, and I play pickleball here three, four times a week. The Rec Center is also the reason that I recently moved to Troutman. I was looking for 55-plus communities all the way between Charlotte and Raleigh, but I chose coming back to Troutman because of Rec Center, not just because of the fitness possibilities that I have here, but also because of all the friendships that I've made. Had I moved away, I would have lost a lot of good friends. Commissioners, I would like to just say to you, thank you so much for providing and supporting the Rec Center.
What I appreciate most as our county is anyone up to you that wants to change their life and make their life, life in the east and a whole lot better than how we currently give you this opportunity. Those that stay in this, be as you love them, if you don't pass, I would absolutely do it. It changes a lot.
This is like the most therapeutic thing you can do. I love it. I said, I'm going to find someplace beyond the winter, but now that I started back, I'm going to start doing this, so I'm going to move my weight so far, my body does definitely improve more than I did.
Honestly, I have to say, just the friendships and the community that I've built along the way coming here. I've been coming here for a couple of years, and it's the people here that really keep me coming back. I've had friends come and go, like, in the past, and still, I'll keep coming back here because there's still a lot of people I know here. I just appreciate, like, the community here. This has always been, since I started coming here, like, a place for me to go to just, like, de-stress after a long day. Like, I always come here straight after work to just get, like, an hour-long workout in, and some cardio, and it just helps me wind down at the end of the day, and even sleep better at night. So, overall, I've just, I've always appreciated how nice they are and how personable they are, too. Like, trying to get to know me over the time that I've been here, incredibly nice to me, and I think that's, like, another reason that I want to keep coming back to just keep building on those friendships and relationships.
The pickleball is what I appreciate the most. I also come in and use the treadmills to check where my oxygen is, how much I can output per liter per minute of oxygen. I played tennis before pickleball, but when I grew back east, the humidity was so bad it couldn't hardly, so pickleball took the place of tennis. People with COPD, you know, get enough oxygen. And if you don't get enough oxygen, then you don't breathe, you don't move as much, and you go in a downward spiral. And the Iredell Recreation Center is someplace where I can count. I don't decondition. Since I've encountered pickleball, I'm stronger, I've reconditioned. So, that the Rec Center is a life staple for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. We just wanted to say thank you.
Who did the filming?
A combination. I'll give a lot of credit to James Cockcamp. He's our marketing outreach specialist.
Okay, because I was going to say, because sometimes it's hard to get people to talk and express their appreciation. They run from the camera, and it was, he had some very...
We had some big cheerleaders. We had some really shy cheerleaders. There was a little bit of coaxing, but they did great.
Yes, great, great variety on that.
Could you imagine trying to get Gene on camera, as shy as he is?
He'd do great.
Y'all, very, very much. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you. Thank y'all's team also, everybody that makes day-to-day work.
You're making us look good. You know that?
Brings us down to public hearings. If you want to go ahead and start with our first one.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Conley. The first public hearing that we have, and Matthew Todd has two rezoning requests. The first one is a request to rezone approximately 3.49 acres at the corner of Halliburton Road and Taylorsville Highway, and Mr. Todd's going to walk you through the details of that request.
Good evening. The first request we have for us tonight is outlined in blue on the screen. Majority of that property is actually already his own neighborhood business with a small sliver that's his own residential agriculture. This property does match, lies entirely within the 2045 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation. It's in close proximity to existing commercial uses and would amend the split zone property so that the parent property may be utilized to its full potential. And the property in yellow essentially is expanding and needs additional space. That's what's triggering this request. In order to use the property to match, it needs to be rezoned from neighborhood business to the requested GB. The land use plan showing that area to be corridor commercial, current property is vacant. There is some residential in the, around, as well as some commercial. The current business that's adjacent that would be expanding over, Halliburton Road, this site's on our right, with some of the residential showing up on the left, looking directly across, looking back up toward the intersection with Taylorsville Highway. And of course, you've got the rail line that runs along this property as well. Planning Board voted unanimously 7-0 to support this request. There's been, there was no opposition at Planning Board. We've not had any phone calls and opposition, and it does not look like there's any opposition tonight for this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about the Honorable Matthew Todd? Anything? The applicant here want to speak, or anybody want to speak on it?
I think the applicant's happy to answer any questions if you have questions.
They got any questions for applicant? Good, okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider a request from applicant Eddie L. Nellinger of EWI Fabrication Manufacturing to rezone approximately 3.49 acres at the corner of Halliburton Road and Taylorsville Highway. No one signed up to speak. Is anyone here would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that said approval is consistent with the 2045 Horizon Plan and is also reasonable and in the public interest because the properties lie entirely within the 2045 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation, are in close proximity to various existing commercial uses, and will amend split zone properties so that the parent property may be utilized to its full potential.
Motion by Commissioner Halfall. In favor, say aye. Any opposed, it passes. Five oh. Our second one for the night.
Absolutely. Mr. Todd also has a second one, and that's the rezoning request of 2.1 acres at the corner of Damascus Church Road and Wilkes-Barre Highway.
Again, this request is outlined in blue on the screen. It's part of a larger parcel that also has HB zoning on the very corner with 115. There is some existing uses on this property, on the HB portion, but also the RA that are grandfathered in. So, this rezoning would help match the zoning with those uses and also allow the applicant to use the back portion of this property that does not have a current use on it. So, give them some additional flexibility and space to use there. Staff does support this request as well. It does match the 2045 Horizon Plan rule commercial designation. It's in close proximity to existing commercial uses, and again, would amend the property that's split zone currently. The 2045 plan showing the area to be real commercial designated. An arrow of the property, you can see the existing commercial uses on that corner that's already zoned, and then also on the other portion that's a legal, legal non-conforming use. Few pictures of the property. Property on our right, looking down 115. Looking across 115. Looking north, back up toward the intersection. This is looking west on Damascus Church Road. Where the sign is in the wooded area, that's the majority of the area that would be used with the rezoning. And looking across, this is in behind the gas station there. Again, Planning Board also voted 7-0 to recommend favor of this request. We've not had any calls of opposition, and there was no opposition at Planning Board. And again, from looking at the crowd, it looks like just the applicant is here on this request as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? Any questions for the applicant? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider a request from applicant Eric Dagenhart of Carolina's Refrigeration to rezone approximately 2.1 acres at the corner of Damascus Church Road and Wilkes-Barre Highway. No one has signed up to speak. I'd like to ask if anyone here would like to speak on this matter. Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amended and to make a finding that said approval is consistent with the 2045 Horizon Plan and is also reasonable in public interest because the property lies entirely within the 2045 Horizon Rule commercial designation. It is close proximity to various existing commercial uses and will amend a split zone property so that it may be utilized to its fullest potential.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passes. Five oh. Number three.
Thank you, Matthew. The next public hearing that we have is to consider a request for a possible economic development incentive for Project ACE 25, and Mr. Craig Goodson is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Chair Conley, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this request on behalf of Project ACE 25 for consideration of an economic development incentive grant. The company is Cooks headers Incorporated, existing company operating in the Statesville Business Park off Highway 70. Due to expanding existing business and some new opportunities, they are in need of adding approximately 90,000 square feet of space to their current facility. If approved, they would add a minimum of 10 full-time jobs, possibly up to 20 jobs. Average wage would be just a little over $66,000 per year. Capital investment in real property would be $7 million, and new machinery and equipment would be 400. Construction would begin in December of this year, and the full investment would be anticipated to be complete by December 31st of 2027. The grant would be based on 75% of real property and 50% on tangible personal property. It'll be a, it would be a five-year term. The total of the incentive would be $135,345, which would be an average of $27,069 per year. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just happy to see the previous two and this one continuing to invest in small businesses and growing businesses. We appreciate what y'all were doing.
Thank all y'all. So, anyone's got any questions? Good. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider a request for the possible economic development incentive for Project ACE 25. Open the hearing. No one has signed up. I'd like to ask if anyone here would like to speak on this matter. Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the public, I'm sorry, the request for the economic development incentive for Project ACE 25, known as Cooks headers, as presented by Craig. Do I need to read all that again, or y'all good? Are we good with all the information that's provided? Okay, Cindy, you got all that in your notes. All right. Here's my motion.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
It is awesome to see current businesses expanding, and in, like, in the case of the one in Stony Point, not only just expanding, but they also support the agriculture industry with what they create, their own line. So, kudos to you folks.
Following down our list. Y'all are free to go. If you want to go ahead and leave,
y'all are free, or you can stay, whatever you want to do.
Sam, watch the rest of this.
You want to be toast.
Thank y'all very much.
Hot dog at the dairy bar.
Following down our agenda, now it brings us down to administrative matters that we covered at the four o'clock. By consent, I'll turn it over to the county manager to go over those.
Absolutely. Thank you. The first item was a presentation from Mooresville Graded School District on the proposed opioid funding partnership between Iredell County and the school systems within Iredell County. This was a presentation to talk about a pilot project that we could do in partnership with Partners Behavioral Health, and this is something that could be replicated in Mooresville Graded as well as Iredell State School Schools. And the Board consented on the initial concept and gave staff the approval to move forward to try to flesh this out and bring it back to the Board for final approval. A request from the Tax Office to accept the 2024 annual tax settlement, to issue orders for collection, and approve advertisement of the prior year tax liens to the Property Tax Commission. There was a request from Emergency Management for approval of a contract amendment to upgrade the current On Solve Code Red Emergency Preparedness Messaging to the unlimited version and to authorize a county manager to sign, and this is replacing the former Hyperreach system that we had. Request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number Three and to amend the Facilities Improvement Fund Capital Project Ordinance for design work for the Animal Services Expansion Project. This is a project that was already funded and appropriated in the budget. This is moving the money from the Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP, to a project ordinance so we can begin the design, and that's the cost of $127,350. A request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number Two to recognize a donation from Partners Behavioral Health. They donated several pieces of furniture for us to furnish the newly finished annex section, and that is to recognize that. A request from Parks and Recreation to apply for the Game Time Playground Grant. This is a matching grant anywhere from 50 to 100%, and the matching funds will be the appropriated funds that are already budgeted in the Parks and Rec Program for a playground. A request from Parks and Recreation to apply for a grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This is a non-matching grant, it's a federal grant, and is intended to have a project that promotes boat, safe boating, Fisher education, things of that nature. A request from Administration to adopt a resolution to reconstitute the Lake Norman Marine Commission. This is, the previous marine commission dissolved the end of June, and this is a resolution to reconstitute that commission by the four counties. A request from Administration to approve the minutes from the meeting on July the 15th, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting. And finally, a request from Fifth Street Ministries, which is, was a Brookwood Inn Displacement Response Plan. The request is $25,000 from the county. Brookwood Inn is closing, and there's roughly about 70 families that are going to be displaced. And with a partnership, I say partnership, but with Partners Behavioral Health, they have county funds that they have accumulated in fund balance, and they have agreed to use those funds to go towards this effort to help these individuals that are being displaced.
Did you say seven or seven?
Seventy. Seventy. I'm sorry, 70 families that are currently, they are at Brookwood Inn, and once it closes, they will not have a place. And so, the effort is to try to help them get placed somewhere else.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the pre-agenda consent matters?
I make a motion, we approve.
By Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, they all pass. Going down, it brings us to the announcement of vacancies occurring on Boards and Commissions, Alternative County Manager, and we've got another list as usual.
Yes, we have a lengthy list. We have six appointments on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We have three appointments on Centralina Aging Advisory Committee, Region F. Three appointments on the Farmland Preservation Board. One appointment on the Mooresville Planning Board, which is an ETJ representative. Two appointments on the Mooresville Board of Adjustment, also ETJ representation. Six appointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. One appointment on the Troutman Planning Board, which is an ETJ member. One appointment on the Iredell County Board of Adjustment, and finally, one appointment on the Iredell County JCPC Board. If anybody is interested in serving in any of these boards or commissions or need more information about it, information is on our website, and you can contact our clerk to the board. He can get you an application, or you can receive the application off our website. It's there on our website.
And don't go too far, because now we're to the appointments to Boards and Commissions, and I think we got a couple here to do tonight.
We do have a few. So, one that we have is the State's Full Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ member. We have one appointment on that board. We did receive two applications. Unfortunately, neither of the individuals actually reside in the ETJ. We wanted to go ahead and bring these and make the Board aware that ahead and bring these and make the board aware that we do have two applicants, but neither one fit the ETJ requirements.
So we can appoint one of these to, if they don't, if we don't have an applicant from within, or we can table for additional time to see if an applicant within the ETJ applies?
So why don't we just table it to our next meeting and see if anybody puts in. If not, we'll just address it then. I mean.
Motion to table it?
Yeah, just.
Motion to table to our next meeting?
Everybody good with that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Half. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then your next one.
The next one is the Animal Grievance Committee. We have one appointment, and Mr. Lance Gray has volunteered to serve for the first time in that capacity.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Lance Gray to the Animal Grievance Committee, please.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is approved.
The final commission is the newly constituted Lake Norman Marine Commission. We have two appointments to make on that. We have two applicants. We have Jason Ralston, and we have Christian Hernandez that have both applied to serve in that capacity.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Christian Hernandez and Jason Ralston.
Can I have a friendly amendment to your motion? And do Mr. Ralston for the five year and the other one for the four? Remember Lisa said that one's a five, one's a four year?
Yep.
If, if the friendly amendment is okay, do Ralston five and Christian for four, unless you want to reverse those.
You're with you. It's your motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Ralston for five and Mr. Hernandez for four.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Brings us down to unfinished business. Anyone have anything? Hope a comment period will be at our next meeting, at our six o'clock meeting in our next meeting coming up. And Commissioner Updates, Commissioner Stroud, you got anything?
I'm just going to say to the Parks and Rec folks, that's phenomenal, and the folks are thanking us, but really it's thanking the citizens of Aridale County. It's citizens of Aridale County money. So kudos to Aridale County. And, you know, there's, there are folks that sometimes will question, you know, why are we in the Parks and Rec business? Well, there's you a good example of some of the reasons why. You know, and, and, you know, while all of us would love every program that we're in to, to, to be self-supporting, not all of them are. Some of them are quality of life programs. And Parks and Rec is huge, not just to, the everyday, but also as we have companies that look to come here. What, what programs do we have for, for their employees or their employees' family to be happy and, and content and, and have things to do? And I will tell you, I'm, I'm super stoked about some of the things that our, our, our Parks and Recs trying to do. And so kudos to them, but more so that thank you is to the folks of Aridale County that, that first pay your taxes, as we heard tonight from Bill Furchess, and for those that support it. And I will tell you, there's a lot of folks out there I think could benefit. I've got a sister, I'm pushing hard, that I think could benefit from a lot of the programs. Would help with a lot of loneliness and, and things. So, so kudos, just good stuff.
Mr. Brown?
We all, I'm gonna follow up with that. I sit on the Parks and Rec Board, and we get a lot of criticism, a lot of criticism. For the past five years, criticism about we need to get rid of something because it costs us money. We're not into money-making business. And, you know, if we were, we wouldn't have a Sheriff's Department because it doesn't make us money. Our fire departments don't make us money. IMS doesn't make us money. We're here to provide a service. And you know what? The Parks and Recs may not, and a lot of people's eyes save lives, but that one lady we saw in that video, it's saving her life.
Oh, absolutely.
You know? And it's so simple that that thing, and to see that, that older gentleman, I don't know how old he is, but the older gentleman to, to show his muscles, there's still room for you. So, you know, I think that, you know, you could look at that.
Mine's up here.
It, it, it would, it helps your mind, don't it? But those guys are, it's just phenomenal. You know, we got a meeting this, this Thursday night, and it's, I just love to hear about the new stuff, what we're doing. And everything's full, you know? Our next problem is going to be like building a school. We got to build a lot of Parks and Rec buildings. So, so, you know, it's, you can never get enough. But, but I do, it's, you're right, it's not.
They think outside the box. I think they really do.
They do. We, we didn't do that. It's, it's like when an employee of this county comes up to me and says, hey, he wants to shake my hands, thank you for my raise. We didn't, we don't give raises. That's not our money. People think it's our money. It's not our money. We just happen to be the ones that are in control of it. So, you know, and the people, they had the vote to, to put us up here to be in control of it. But I appreciate those guys.
Commissioner Half?
Oh, several things. Same thing with the recreation, but I want to just mention, you know, based on all the places I go, to Commissioner Brown's point and Commissioner Stroud's point, I think we do benefit from it economically because, you know, as Brad mentioned, the business industry coming here looks at schools, jobs, and quality of life. And those recreational situations create those things. So people do look at that, and I think indirectly it does bring in revenue because people, you heard people say they moved here because of those quality of life things. So I, I like to point that out. I want to ask us all to pray for all the school systems, starting by the staff, students, parents, the public. I want to ask everybody to adjust their time and make extra time when you're traveling to and from work. There's new drivers out there, buses, schools, kids out there on the street. Slow down, be patient, let everybody get in a routine again when school's starting back. And I want to just say thank you to all of our emergency services workers and, and all the people that are impacted by storms that are out in the storms, fixing lines, cutting trees that are down, you know, out in storms, treating patients that's wrecked, and those type of things. So we're very blessed to have a lot of quality people. So just a few things on from that.
Vice Chair Neder?
I am, how many times we drive down the road and we go past the buildings, and we forget what goes on inside?
Yeah.
And I really feel like the video captured the heart of that. And it reminds us that we do have an impact, all of us, on each other with the decisions we make. And going back to the invocation, Commissioner Stroud, when you ask us all to consider that and remember that when we make our decision, and it does, it just, it, it keeps you grounded. And you see folks with a thank you. But I am thanking also the, our employees, our people, our staff on that one, and those who are willing to, to share their thoughts on camera. So also, we've had a new opening for the Mooresville Christian Mission in Mooresville. They've been around for many, many years, but they have a new location. And in that same building is also NC Works, which helps connect people with employment. Also in that building is the Mooresville branch of the Aridale County Partnership for Young Children. So having those three services under one roof helps people tremendously, and it's on Main Street. And a lot of times, the location is critical to providing the service, because if you can't get to the service, you can't have the connections that you need. Now that they're working together, of course, you know, virtually you can, you can reach out to all these, but if you walk in that place, they have staff right there ready to help you problem solve. And it was, it was a huge ribbon cutting. Very impressed with everyone that showed up, and just glad to see that. Doors open, ready to serve the community on that one. And last but not least, today is back in focusing on education. Can't believe where the summer goes. Time to start school back up again. Today at the Unity Center was a day of training and information for the EC, Exceptional Children's Department for the school system. It was packed. I did not realize how many staff are just in that field. Of course, they're getting information from the state, opportunity to, to hear what direction needs to be gone. Of course, there's a shortage on people, staff on that end too. But everyone that is showing up, doing their job, is literally directly impacting everyone else in some way, shape, or form. So I'm just thankful for those, and good luck to all the kids starting back to school and teachers and staff. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Conley.
Anybody have any new business? Good. County Managers report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Well, we might end it tonight for Scotty so he can get out of here. We did have a couple closed session items this afternoon. We, our first one was the Kearney client in accordance North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, Aridale County versus Purdue Pharma LP. And I'd like to ask if we have a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve proposed settlements and entering into participation agreements with the following defendants in the national opioid litigation: Purdue Pharma LP, Avagen Inc., if I butcher these, I apologize, Amneal Pharmaceuticals Inc., Apotex Inc., Hiccup Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., Indivore Inc., Mylan Pharmaceuticals Inc., Sun Pharmaceuticals Industries Inc., Zytus Pharmaceuticals USA Inc. And allow the, authorize the County Manager and/or Finance Director as authorized to execute any necessary documentation.
Motion by Commissioner Half. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. The next one we had was property acquisition in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A5. And I'd like to ask, we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of approximately 15 acres located at 1002 Winston Avenue, State'sville, North Carolina, for the purchase price of $2,100,000.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Well, if everybody's got everything, it brings us down to the end of tonight's meeting.
I got one more thing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, you know, we all work together. We work with State'sville, we work at Mooresville. And, and, you know, we might always not agree. Me and him fight, me and Gene fight. And, but we got one of us that's, that's sick, and we need to pray for Ron Wyatt. So it's not, you know, he's, he's been going through a lot. And I think if the people of this county, we need to show what kind of people we are. Everybody come together, pray for him.
And you're having some procedures coming up, so we need to keep you in our prayers too.
Okay, brings us down. We've got a meeting next week, August the 12th.
12th at 6:00 PM at Cooperative Extension, the annual report to the people.
So with that said, I'd like to ask a motion, if we have a motion to recess until Wednesday, August the 12th at 6:00 at the Aridale County Agricultural Center at 444 Bristol Drive, State'sville, for the Aridale County Annual Report to the People with the Cooperative Extension Office. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess until next Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, I also.
Next Tuesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday.
Also want to thank that wonderful clerk filling in tonight. She, she's awesome.
Thanks.
Something in your mailbox. We're on recess.
I've Carrie Netzoo.